Public schools are the backbone for preserving democracy. Want to thank the sponsors for recognizing the importance of the forum. That brings the candidates' views to the public, enhancing participation. Lastly, I want to thank the candidates who are showing their dedication and passion for the community. And their willingness to serve. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation in government by increasing understanding of public policy issues. Through education and advocacy, the League is committed to educating voters to help them make their own decisions. And participate in the electoral process. The League never supports or opposes candidates for office or political parties. As this is a debate for candidates for Board of Education, I want to mention that the League, founded shortly after the 19th Amendment to the Constitution was passed granting women the right to vote, was founded over 100 years ago by Carrie Chapman Cat, an activist who had worked as a teacher and school superintendent. The format is as follows. We will have opening remarks by all the candidates, followed by the questions. That we will go in varying orders. I've created a grid. Followed by one-minute closing statements by the candidates. We will begin with opening statements by Lindsay Betzala.
Thank you to the PTC and to the League of Women Voters for hosting. My name is Lindsay Betzala. My husband, JJ, and I moved to Westfield eight years ago when our boys were three years and eight months old. We've had the pleasure of watching them thrive at Lincoln and now Franklin Elementary. They both have many years in the Westfield schools ahead of them. I'm excited to be running for our board to make sure that they and their peers and all Westfield students are provided the best education possible. I'm also running to create a strong partnership between Westfield parents and the board grounded in open communication and dialogue. Over the past few months, it's become apparent that there is a growing disconnect between board members and Westfield families. And the board's inability to navigate today's most pressing issues in both words and actions motivated me to get involved. I'm not one to run away from a problem or to sweep things under a rug. I take things head-on and I'm passionate about making them better for our children. Professionally, I'm a publisher of nonfiction books at Penguin Random House. From this work, I carry a deep appreciation for the power of words and the importance of clear communication. If elected, I will bring those skills to the board as well as my energy and collaborative spirit. My pledge is to listen to as many families as I can, advocate for the community, and create a safe, well-rounded learning environment where all students can flourish. One of the biggest selling points of Westfield is the great public school system, and it's important for us to safeguard that. There's a lot of work to be done, but I'm excited about our future and would be honored to represent you on the board. Thank you.
Do we want to, is Leila ready or should we move on, Lisa?
You need to move on.
Move on, okay. Ms. Patel?
Thank you to the Westfield Parent Teacher Council and the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum. I've been on the board for over three years and I'm the current president of the Board of Education. I've served on all board committees and co-chaired the Policy Personnel and Governance Committee. I served as the board liaison to Washington and Franklin Elementary Schools and have participated in numerous New Jersey and Union County School Board Association meetings. A little bit about me is I have a bachelor's degree in engineering and a master's in educational leadership and instruction. I'm certified to teach K through 12 math, and I've been a middle school math teacher in a neighboring town for 20 years. As a teacher has taught and interacted with thousands of students and parents over the years, I'm well-versed in the intricacies of public school education, curriculum, and staff development. I've lived in Westfield for over 10 years. I have two boys that have benefited from the outstanding education that Westfield school systems provide. Both were involved in sports, music, theater, and scouting. With my board leadership experience and education background, I am well-equipped to address the practical realities, possibilities, and promise of public schools in our community. Thank you.
Continue. Okay, let's, to kind of keep the alphabetical order, can we jump back to Leila Morelli, please?
Yes, I can, and I apologize. Four computers later, okay. My name is Leila Morelli. Thank you to everyone who made this evening possible. My husband and I have lived in Westfield since 2006. We moved here after our first daughter was born. We now have three children. My twins are freshmen at the high school and my eldest is a senior. As a parent and in my professional life as a speech-language pathologist for the mountainside school districts, I've been a strong advocate for children's needs. Having proudly worked in the education field for over 19 years, I'm uniquely well-suited to approach a Board of Education position from the perspective of both a parent and an educator. I'm running for reelection based on the belief that as an incumbent, I will bring the expertise not only as an established board member, but also as an educational specialist. I'm finishing up my third year as a member of the Westfield Board of Ed, and I have co-chaired the Policy Personnel and Governance Committee for the past two years and sat on the Curriculum Committee my first year. I have served as board liaison to Jefferson Elementary School, Lincoln Kindergarten, and Union County Educational Services Commissions, and have actively participated in New Jersey School Board Association events. I'm grateful and thrilled to have been an integral part of the development of the 2023-2028 District Strategic Plan. I look forward to building upon that progress that has been made in the past three and a half years since I have had a seat on the board. Thank you.
Mr. Schaefer?
Thank you, thank you for everybody attending and thank you for the organizers of this event. People have asked me why I should, would want to run for the Board of Ed, especially now considering that my kids are no longer part of the school system. But I feel like my son and daughter received a phenomenal education. I would like other parents to know that as a member of the board, I would strive to give your kids the same excellent learning experience that our children received in their 24 combined years. From Washington Elementary to Roosevelt Intermediary to Westfield High School. Both went on to Lehigh University. My daughter is now in med school. My son is a Mountain Hog sophomore. Those who do know me know my views, and if you don't, I'm as open a book as you'll find, given I've written over 325 published articles. They've been featured in The Wall Street Journal, The New York Daily News, The New York Post, The National Review, Daily Wire, The Hill, Zero Hedge, The Federalist, and others. I've also written three published books, two novels, and one trading-related. I've owned two businesses, making me especially sensitive to policing budgetary matters. Unlike government agencies, I cannot control my revenue stream. Therefore, I always try to live within the means. I live and work right here in Westfield. My office is right on Lenox by the post office, so I would be approachable to any parent or teacher who has something you wish to discuss, so long as it obviously stays within Board of Ed protocols. So come to my office and let's talk. I'll listen to you. What I'm trying not to do is make ambitious promises only to find out once I'm on the board that we have neither the authority, the money, or the backing from members to honor them. But what I will do is lay out my general beliefs so that you know who I am throughout this coming event. Finally, were I to sum up my philosophy when it comes to what I would like to bring to the board, it would be thus. I firmly believe that the three Rs of education should be reading, writing, and arithmetic, not racism, recycling, and reproduction. My bumper sticker slogan, if you will, would be three simple words. Parents' views matter. If you feel this way as well and want someone on the board who would treat you, who knows your kids better than any administrator or teacher with respect, and listen to what they have to say, then even if you don't agree with me on every topic under the sun, I'm a candidate you can support without reservation. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Shore?
Thank you very much, Lisa. I'd like to thank the PTC and the League of Women Voters, as well as all the attendees tonight for attending this. My name is Mark Shore. My wife and I, Allison, moved to Westfield back in 2007. We have two kids that have gone through and are going through the Westfield Public School System, which we think is a phenomenal program. I graduated University of Connecticut with a degree in actuarial science. I spent five years on the Board of the Westfield Daycare Center from all positions, including fundraising to vice president and president. I currently run a not-for-profit as well as my day job, which is an insurance consultant and advisor in downtown Westfield. I'd like to get on this board so we can make the necessary arrangements and the preparations for all the things that are coming down in the future that I believe are going to require an outside-the-box thought process that we currently don't enjoy at this moment. We've got all sorts of new students going to be moving into the system, and I think we need to start preparing for that today. My name is Mark Shore, and I would appreciate your vote on the board. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to begin with the questions. The order will be...
Am I going to be permitted to speak?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes, go ahead. Sorry, Ms. Steinberg.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Julie Steinberg, and I'd like to thank the PTC as well as League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's forum. I have lived here with my husband and two children for 12 years. We have two children, ages 15 and 18, and they have benefited greatly, sorry. They have benefited greatly from the public school systems, including Jefferson Edison and Westfield High School. I grew up in East Brunswick, New Jersey, and as a daughter of a public school teacher, I was taught early on to value public education and to value public service. And subsequently, since I've been here, I've spent a lot of time advocating in this space, including a number of different issues relating to Holocaust education, special education and disability, STEM enhancements, and support. Those things have been put into action. I haven't just used words. I've actually attended record meetings regularly, and I've actually worked behind the scenes and in front of the cameras to get things done. And I'm proud of that, and I promise that as a Board of Education candidate, I would continue to provide that type of advocacy for you. I promise to listen, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, I apologize again. We will begin with the first question with Ms. Morelli, Ms. Patel, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Shore, Ms. Steinberg, and Ms. Betzala.
Lisa, I'm sorry, I just want to preface. When I hold up the white paper, that means you have 30 seconds left. And when I hold it up, if I hold it up again, you have 10 seconds left.
Okay, is everybody clear on that? Okay, the best, the more we can keep to the time, the more questions we get through. So, okay. The order, Ms. Morelli, Ms. Patel, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Shore, Ms. Steinberg, Ms. Betzala. You can just keep going. You don't need to wait for me to introduce you again, unless you keep running over time, then I will have to. So, first question, what do you think the biggest focus should be for the next few years for the Board of Education?
Okay, so that is an easy one for those of us who are incumbents because our strategic plan should be our biggest focus. The priorities that I originally ran with, the values that I had originally emphasized and the community agreed with, I assume because I was elected, really played a part in the development of this strategic plan, along with the community and the administration and all the stakeholders. So, the first goal is to deepen the learning experience for students. One of the ways that I think that we really need to continue to work on this is to have relevant and timely electives added. And we are seeing that this budget that's being asked to be passed in April with the introduction of robotics at the high school, as well as computer science in K through 8. We're also talking about if block scheduling would be something that would be beneficial for our students, the pros and cons for that. Goal two is promoting school culture programs and practices that prioritize wellness. We are going to continue to do that. We've added Saks and guidance counselors. We're adding part-time safety officers. And again, that's, you know, talking about scheduling has to do as well with the mental health of students who research shows high schoolers do better when they sleep late. I also want to continue to expand our programming, not only for our cookie cutter kids, but for our high achievers and for our kids who have special needs. So we're talking AP programming. And when we talk about inclusion, making our extracurriculars accessible to all so that there is not a necessity for the high level of competition, let's say for theater, for those kids who aren't going to be a part of that, but they still have the opportunity to engage in that in an extracurricular, in a club, or something like that. And lastly, facilities, facilities, facilities. Full-day kindergarten, improving our fields. A comprehensive plan in accordance with the budget where we're making small increments. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to address the strategic plan, which is what my top priority would be, is to focus on that because we did put a lot of effort into the strategic planning council that put it together. And the last goal that Leila had just recently just mentioned was the developing the comprehensive finance and facilities plan because that would support all of the other goals. So with that comes, yes, our fields and our facilities because we do have aging buildings and we do have overused fields that need to be worked on. And all of that requires money. So right now, our most pressing issue would be the budget and to ensure that we get the budget passed so that we can move forward in following through with our strategic plan and making the changes that the administration and the board have approved and with feedback from the community so that we're all in alignment and we can move forward and get the district back to a place of excellence and building back and growing where we want us to be in the future to support our students. Thank you.
Do I go now? Me? Yeah. Well, obviously, I don't have the advantage of being on the inside of the board as my two predecessors here do. So I will leave them to discuss the details of the five-year plan and whatnot. In general, I guess why I'm doing this tonight is to just kind of introduce myself and my priorities as a whole. Obviously, once you go into the board, just like with any business, you start to really do, you do a deep dive and you see how the sausage is made. Some things you want to do, you can. Some things you want to do, you just can't. I mean, some numbers just don't lie. But I would say, I guess for the parents, I would like the parents to be more, I would like to have the budget more accessible to them. And what I mean by that is more detail within the budget. You know, not just saying $8 million for this program, but actually really break it down, find out who, kind of where every one of these dollars is going. My hunch is that $5,000 here, $50,000 over there. That can all kind of add up. And I guess for the children, I'd like, number one, to focus on STEM. We had, you know, we've been hearing that there's national programs to get kids to read by third grade. I mean, Chinese kids are programming by third grade. Our kids should be reading by first grade, so I don't know why that's considered a great milestone. Also, I would say full-day kindergarten because I think kindergarten is an essential stepping stone into grade school. I think it's not what it used to be. I think it's, I mean, so much learning occurs in a kindergarten environment that I don't think we quite appreciate enough. And finally, just facilities, you know, I mean, some of our, I think the newest school we have was made in 1964. Is that Temacus? We've got some schools that are over 120 years old. And, you know, and they're showing their age. Now, obviously, it's hard to say to yourself, I'm going to do this. I'm going to give you all a laundry list of things I'm going to do. Oh, and by the way, I'm not going to raise your taxes to do it. So, within that, right, politics, they say, is the art of the possible. So, once I get in there, we'll take a look and we'll see what I really consider being a central expense, what I consider not to be. I would like to see us focus more on the arts and less on DEI because I think the arts, as a musician, as a pianist, as a guitarist, as somebody who was a graphic artist before I was a trader, I know that there are a lot more than just hobbies. Same with physical fitness. I think that's essential. So maybe shift that priority a little bit. But until I actually get in there and look under the hood, I can't get into the too much detail on it. That would be irresponsible on my part. Thank you.
Mr. Shore?
Thank you. So the biggest focus going forward over the next couple of years, and while I applaud and thank the two current board members, I think that we need to be a little more singularly focused. We're going to have a number of new students entering into our system. Whether we like it or not, Westfield one is happening on the scale of which we're not sure, obviously, yet. And Park Place kind of meetings are happening. This, by all estimates, is going to increase our student population. And unless we start focusing on that now, we will be behind, we will be behind the eight ball trying to play catch-up. Currently, the district has approximately 400 to 450 fewer students than we had pre-COVID. And I know this because I've attended the budget meetings, I've attended the school board meetings, and that was a number that was told to me as recently as this morning. Again, we are very quickly going to have that number climb right back up to pre-COVID levels. And if you look at what we're asking, what they're going to be asking us to pass for a budget on April 16th of this year, you're going to see that the annual increases afforded to us by the state is not going to be sufficient enough to maintain the current level of teaching. Once we add 450 new students through all of these new buildings, we're going to have a bigger budgetary constraint and strain. My second goal would be to create more blue-ribbon schools in Westfield. Dr. Perry just got a blue-ribbon school at the Washington School last year. The only one prior to that was back in around 2005 or '06 of Roosevelt School. There is no reason we're not striving for and achieving blue-ribbon status for more of our schools. Thank you.
Ms. Steinberg?
Hi, I just want to echo what Sonal and Leila said earlier in terms of focusing on the strategic plan with an emphasis. Thrilled to see the robotics made it into the budget this year. These came out of recommendations that me and other robotics coaches and teachers made back in 2022. Wellness, obviously, an emphasis on our aging facilities and our capacity, and perhaps looking at capacity a little more creatively than we have in the past. For example, right now, we don't look at capacity from every single possible lens. We don't know how many kids are likely, for example, to have disabilities in the district. We just know how many kids have IEPs or 504s. Perhaps if we looked at that, we'd have a better idea of what the real needs were. In terms of the budget, I agree with that. It is very public. I do attend the budget meetings most years, and if not, I go online. So I do think that it's very available for parents, but it's also exhausting. It's a lot of work, and I spend a lot of time looking at that. And as I'm going to work for Price, Whereas Cooper for six years, I'm very comfortable with that. But I do think it's important to look creatively to the budget and to make determinations, not just in terms of cuts, which is something that's hurt us in past years, but also in terms of how are we going to expand in a way that's reasonable and necessary. In terms of what I would do differently, I would like to expand dual credit. The implementation of the Holocaust and genocide elective that I championed is one of the few dual-credit options that we have available at Westfield High School. Kids can actually learn high school and college credit while they're doing it. This is not in lieu of AMP, but in addition to AP classes, which are both valuable. I'd also enhance early and elementary education services. Now, of course, that has a facilities context that needs to be looked at very closely in a cost context. The other thing I would do there is I would take a look at the ICS classes. We offer them in preschool, middle school, and high school. We don't offer them at the elementary level. And perhaps it's time to look at that and see whether or not that's creating a disconnect for our students who are moving from one to the other to the other to the other. Finally, I would take a look at the wellness and mental health issues that are affecting our students, especially since COVID. And I would do that by taking a look at the case management of our guidance counseling as well as our child study team's members and see whether or not we need to look at that to optimize performance, both for the staff and the students. Thank you.
Okay, second question, the order will be...
Hold on, I didn't get...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay, so I have a few focuses that I think the board should make a priority. First is investing in education in general, but updating the curriculum so that it is consistent throughout our schools at the elementary and middle school levels and within the high school itself. I've spoken to a good amount of students and parents, and inconsistencies in the curriculum is a very big problem. I'm obviously not currently on the board. I do know it's being worked on, but it needs to be a huge priority for the future. I also think we need to expand the enrichment opportunities for our younger learners. This will happen if the budget is approved with the hiring of three new elementary enrichment teachers, which would be fantastic because we need to really better prepare our young kids for when they get to high school. I think we should expand extracurricular activities at all ages, and we also need to focus on keeping and retaining our teachers because that's where the best education can come from. We want the best of the best in Westfield. Number two, I would invest in infrastructure. Improving our facilities is a through line to being able to do so much more in the districts. From the desks in the schools to the physical buildings to the fields that we currently have, we have to take better care of our facilities. We need to focus on advancing technology classes and STEAM, full-day kindergarten, and we need to make the infrastructure a priority to do all of that. And lastly, I think the board really needs to communicate better with the community and regain their trust so that they can get a budget vote to be able to do all of these things. There's a lot of work to be done on the communication side as well. Thank you.
Okay. Now, the second question. Ms. Patel, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Shore, Ms. Steinberg, Ms. Betzala, Ms. Morelli. And the question is, how would you address the problem posed by the facility constraints of our existing schools and the increasing demand for full-day kindergarten? Ms. Patel?
So, it is true that we are under constraints for our facilities, not just in space, but also in cost. So that is something that is being added in this current year in the budget vote in April, so which is important for people to come out and vote. So we appreciate your support and acknowledgement and understanding of why we need to get the budget passed. Going forward, in order to get full-day kindergarten and to get some improvement in our fields, we have hired an architect that's done a very thorough review of our facilities and is providing us opportunities, drafts, ideas on how we can maximize what we currently have and how we can move forward, which would then entail a referendum in 2025. That is what we would need for two, full-day kindergarten. We would need to go through a referendum. And in addition, for the additional students that was highlighted through the demographic study that would be coming into the system, it would also incorporate how we could manage and handle the influx of additional students and the growing demands and needs of the space that's required for all the additional opportunities that we want to provide to our students. Thank you.
Well, it really sounds like it's more of a budgetary issue. All of us would like better, like I said in my opening remarks, all of us would like to have finer facilities. All of us would like to have accommodations for the new students coming in. But as I'm sure Ms. Patel alluded to, that costs money. So really, there's only three ways to deal with it. You either raise revenue, you either cut costs, or you do a little bit of both. Obviously, we have long-term plans for this. We've used, we've spent money on architects to take a look and see what we can do. But really, it will be up to whether or not we can afford it. And part of what it'd be, part of what affording it means is you have to go in and look at, I guess, what you would call discretionary spending. I'm not sure of the exact terminology here. And just decide whether, what your priorities are. You know, there are no such things as solutions. There's just trade-offs. So if you, if we really need to do this and we really need to raise capital, like there's no raised money, there's no other way to do it. We've cut to the bone, and pretty soon we'll be throwing the baby out with the bathwater. Then at that point, we sit down with the parents openly and honestly and say, "Look, here's what we want to do. Here's what we have an idea for. Here's what it will cost. What do you all think?" And at this point, we'll either have to put our money where our mouth is or we'll have to try and come up with alternative solutions. And I don't have any at the moment, but I'm sure as this process continues, I will learn more and probably have better answers for you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Brett. So, to address the facility constraints, first thing we're going to need to do is get community engagement. We need community, both engagement and buy-in. We're going to need a full-day kindergarten in Westfield. We should already have one. We're one of 15 districts that do not have it in the state of New Jersey. We're going to need to raise money to do all these things. There's not, I've looked at the budget numbers. I've been in those budget meetings for the last four weeks or so. There was unfortunately not a lot of fat on there. However, there are opportunities to bring some of that money back to the district. Currently, right now, our district pays approximately $8.6 million to send kids out of the district that require needs and education and transportation that we can't currently provide them. And I will tell you, the board is working on trying to bring them back. So I'm not here to tell you that I'm coming up with this idea on my own. They are working to bring that, bring those children back and to keep that money in Westfield. That will certainly help and go a long way. If we can bring some of those children back and have a real community engagement with the community, prioritize both the facilities, the full-day kindergarten. When I say facilities, I mean the buildings and the fields. I think that's what we're going to need to do. And there's not going to be any painless solution. We're going to need to find a way to raise more money than even we can save by bringing children back into the district. Thank you.
Ms. Steinberg?
Yes, so I'd like to echo some of the comments that were made by the others on the forum today. I think it's all correct, and I do agree with Sonal that the architectural review and the 2025 referendum are key. The facility constraints, particularly for something like full-day kindergarten, are significant. So the question is, how do we figure out a way, not only to just maximize, not just to cut and maximize revenues, but to do it perhaps in ways that we haven't done before? So I would say that one thing we perhaps should be doing is when we are looking at our budget items is whether or not we can maximize federal funds and whether or not we can pursue that more than we have as a district in the past. I personally think that there is opportunity in several areas, and I'd like to see us pursue that. We also have excellent... We also have excellent on-the-ground fundraising through organizations like the P T Os in here in the district. And perhaps a capital funding campaign might also be part of what we need to do. Something that doesn't have to be done, but something perhaps to look at. And finally, I'd say when I look at the things that I have proposed, for example, expanding dual credit. Well, expanding dual credit is a way to possibly save the district money. When the Holocaust and genocide curriculum was created, it was done in conjunction with Kane University. It's a ready-to-go curriculum. The opportunities are very significant here in Union County and across the country for more dual credit. That means that we can work with colleges, whether or not we have the classes at the high school, at the colleges, or remotely to get resources, to get curriculum, to get classes that perhaps we want to expand in, but we don't have the facilities or the capacity or the money to do. And so I'd like to look at that a little bit more closely. As somebody who's been on the robotics team and been a coach and mentor for five years now, I am very excited to see robotics on the agenda for the budget. But I do know how difficult it's been to even try to hire somebody, even when we do have the budget. So why not leverage dual credit? Why not look at opportunities that we have with our local and county and state resources? And those are just some of the creative ways that I would look at in order to move the needle forward in this area.
Thank you. Ms. Betzal.
Um, okay, I know that this is a topic of longstanding discussion in Westfield, as my fellow candidates have mentioned as well. When we moved here in two thousand and sixteen, I was told by the time my younger son got to kindergarten, we'd have a full day option. But the twenty-two, twenty-three school year pass, and obviously we don't have that. So I know at one point there were plans to build on Jefferson and Washington to be able to expand the program. I don't know what happened to them. But I'd like to look at what the architects have found and investigate and figure out how we can maximize the funding to do this. I don't know that there's been a new plan post-COVID put in place, but I'm dedicated to making this happen. The how is not a hundred percent clear tonight. But I would look at the numbers, look at the infrastructure, look at the space, and figure out how we can do it moving forward. We have to develop and approve a plan that takes the community buy-in, and then we put it into action. Full day kindergarten should be a top priority. We have to keep our kids in the district, and we need to be able to invest in our youngest learners. Think about how much stronger the entire district can be if we start them off right with full day kindergarten. Thank you.
Ms. Morelli.
So when we moved here in two thousand and six, I didn't even know full day kindergarten was not a choice. I'm from New York, and that's a thing there, and ninety-two percent of towns have full day kindergarten. We're so behind the times in this area, and it's not only the correct educational decision and advantage for our students, it also provides equal access to education for everyone. Not every family in Westfields can pay for private education, and single parents or working parents or families with different type also need their kids to be in school full-time. We do need community buy-in. One of the ways that we can ensure that to, to talk to the parts of the community that don't have children in schools and, and work with them and explain to them that it will increase the value of our homes. And when hiring our new superintendent, we made sure to hire somebody who knew that this was a goal of ours to have full day kindergarten and that we wanted to hire someone who was on board with this and who had experience with reference. And it is in the works. Now, my kids will be in college by the time we are ready, but we are going to get there. We are going to have, we have already started putting the work in with funding for staff that can't be absorbed. But by the operational budget, we will have to have staff, but we will need to have a referendum for our capital budget. And our goal is to work with the community, just as we did when we passed the vote last year, the budget vote last year, to have buy-in and to see these increases.
Great, thank you. Okay, the third question, the order will be Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Shore, Mr. Steinberg, Ms. Betzalo, Ms. Morelli, Ms. Patel. The question regards playgrounds. How would you address the issue of upgrading school playgrounds that is listed as a priority in the strategic plan?
Uh, how would I, well, I would, I would try to make them, you know, this is kind of a buzzword, but I would hope that they'd be more inclusive for children with special needs. But I'm not really sure, to be honest with you, I'm not sure I understand the question. How would I, can you repeat that?
Sure. How would you address the issue of upgrading the school playgrounds? I mean, how would you get the job done? How would you upgrade the school playgrounds? It's my understanding as an outsider that parent-teacher groups are raising the money for these.
Yeah, they are. Yeah, that I do understand.
Capital improvements.
That I do know. And again, I mean, so much of this discussion is going to come down to dollars and cents and to prioritizing. And like Mark said before, you know, I believe it was Mark, I, somebody said there wasn't a lot of bone to cut in the, in the board. And but you know what, having run two businesses, there's always, there's always money to cut. I think the Board of Ed spent six thousand this year on board members to stay in Atlantic City Resort at the annual N J S B Conference. I believe they've spent over, and please correct me if I'm wrong, anybody who's on the board, because I do not want to spread false information. I'd rather be, rather you tell me I'm wrong than me saying, you know, say something that's not true. The district wasted, from what I understand, over a hundred thousand dollars on a district app because they got feedback that the west, that the website was too difficult to use. I don't know if that's true or not, but if so, that's an awful lot of money. I mean, five thousand here, fifty thousand there, what they have. They asked the Westfield Ed Fund for forty thousand dollars for a racial, for racial literacy, whatever that means. You know, we're strapped for cash, and we've had to lay off teachers, but they're still attending teachers to spend, you know, to go on these conferences. And, you know, so there's always ways to cut if you really have to. And I do think being, and I'm sure, you know, being someone who's really run my own businesses since two thousand and seven, you know, you, you do find a way, but it's not always the easiest thing to do. And once again, you know, and this is where I think parent engagement is crucial, because there were, there are going to be a lot, there's going to be choices that we will either be able to pay for or we won't. We're not going to be able to get everything we want, and so we're going to have to start to prioritize. And really, I, you know, a lot of that has to do with parental input. But, you know, you, you can't, you know, make a silk purse out of a sow's ear, as they say, from the business standpoint. So I guess my short, I guess my Cliff Note answer to that would be, I can't answer that fully until I go inside the budget and see what we can do. I think it's important, I think it's important for kids to play. I think physical education is very important. It's very good for your mental health, too. And if we can make them inclusive so that kids with special needs also have access to these playgrounds and don't feel left out, I mean, that's, that's a win for everybody. But again, it'll, it'll come down to, you know, calculator is going to make a lot of these decisions, and I don't know if it'll be easy or not. Thank you.
Thank you. So I upgrade the playgrounds. It's actually something we, that we did successfully when I was president of the board of the Westfield Daycare Center. You know, there's probably a few more constraints with a private, well, few fewer constraints with a private school than there is with a public institution. But we were very successful in going out and getting, getting grants and donations. But, you know, to our earlier point, this is all going to be part of the facility's budget. If the money's not going to come from the P T O and the other organizations that support each individual school. I know, you know, at Washington School and Brad, you were a part of it for a lot of years. We did the Washington School Show, and a lot of that money went to a lot of different things, including the playgrounds. I, I, you know, that, that's just unfortunately the way of the world right now in Westfield, and I wish it wasn't, but it is. Unless everybody wants to take it on the chin with a huge tax increase, then, you know, we're going to have to find some outside-the-box solutions for these. That's going to be, again, community engagement. It's going to be these P T O organizations, and it's going to be looking for grants and other, other sources of both equipment and money to be able to do these things without the Westfield, without the consumer, the parents feeling the brunt of that paycheck. That's all I would do.
Ms. Steinberg.
Yes, um, I agree with a lot of what my, my co-panelists have said this evening, and I just would like to add a couple of things. I was really happy to see what happened in terms of making the Lincoln Playground more accessible. I know the parents that were involved with that, and I know them in part because I'm in the community, but also because I am a parent of a child with special needs, specifically physical disabilities. And I know how long it took to get that done, and I know how difficult it was to move that needle forward. And I don't think that we should always have to make it that hard to move that needle forward regardless of budgeting priorities. I do think that when we have these sort of considerations, we should be looking, as I said earlier, if we're here tonight, we should have already looked at the budget. We should already understand it, and we should already have specific suggestions about how we would manage this. And in addition to the items that I stated earlier, I want to be very clear here that there are grants, both in terms of private, county, state, and federal. It's just extremely time-consuming to do that, and that's where perhaps we could reach out to the community to get more people to help us move that needle forward. I also think that the underlying, one of the other underlying issues, unfortunately, for the playgrounds is kids don't just play on the playground properly when they're outside. They play on the fields at the schools. And sometimes that is very difficult, especially when the fields are very, very wet. The playground area becomes much, much smaller. As a Jefferson parent, I'm very familiar with the pool that goes up there three or four times a year, and I know that we're not the only school that has to worry about that. So I think we need to look at creative ways to start managing that, because it's very difficult, not just for the kids, but also for the teachers to give those children the outdoor time they want during recess, for the physical education teachers to give them the outdoor time they'd want on nicer days if it's rained the day before. And so those are the types of things where I'm really hoping with the architect's recommendation that landscape architecture was also taken into consideration and that hopefully we have some solutions to help both the kids and our staff with this particular issue relating to playgrounds.
Hi, um, okay, so I totally understand this problem. I spend a lot of time at Franklin Elementary School, and I can tell you the Franklin Playground is far from handicap accessible. If you have a physical disability, you literally cannot access it in any way. It's actually, it's pretty unbelievable, and it needs to be a top priority to be able to fix that. There's steps, there's hills, there's everything. You just, you can't get there. I know Project Playground has been fantastic, and they were able to accomplish, you know, amazing things at Lincoln. I know they're working on Jefferson and Franklin right now, but this definitely needs to be a priority. Grants are a huge part of it. Time-consuming or not, I think they, it's something that we can do, because it's a way that we can get the money to be able to support it. Project, Project Playground is supported by our P T Os and supported by the community and donations, but we could really, really benefit from the grants, and we should be able to put the time towards finding them to be able to make the playgrounds accessible. You know, Julie, you mentioned the fields. Those are all part of the playgrounds, too. You're a hundred percent right. And kids are getting hurt because they are not kept up and maintained. So that has to be a part of the plan as well. And I think we just need to look at the budget and find the space for it, but also be able to apply for grants so that we have the extra funding to make it happen, because all kids should be able to access the playground no matter their abilities.
Ms. Morelli.
So, um, you have to spend money to make money, and that is something that you have to do when there are so many priorities and you want to address all of them. So, um, some of the things that come to mind, especially when we're talking about the playground, is the money that we're spending to have our current staff go to Rutgers and be educated in field maintenance in the hopes that Swamp will know. Some swamp, but yes, you're right. You know, Project, Project Playground did an amazing job with Lincoln. I was there for the ribbon-cutting ceremony, and it was amazing. You know, I'm a speech therapist. I saw the PEX communication system. It's all-inclusive, but it's also safe for abled students where the fear is, is this rundown equipment is not safe for anyone. Grants are a great idea. So are fundraisers. The ways that we have started thinking about kind of increasing revenue as well as we are increasing, talking about increasing our programming for next year, is taking students from other districts who are willing to pay for those spots. That is a way for us to increase our revenue as well. So, and again, increasing staff, we're increasing programming. So we're laying out some money in the hopes that we're saving children from going out of district as well as getting some revenue when kids from other districts are coming here to have their need. And we need to take some of this funding and work on the playgrounds as well.
Ms. Patel.
Thank you. Since the majority of our questions have been related, or at least all gone back to the budget, I just wanted to just provide, provide some information about the history of the budget and how it goes back to in two thousand and eleven, when the state significantly, significantly cut our budget, which caused reductions of over four million dollars. Since that time, we've been, we've been put at a two percent cap on our operating budget. So as we all know, the costs have risen consistently by over two percent for the last ten years. So in that time span, cuts have been made, efficiencies have been made, and we have relied upon, the school district has had to rely upon P T O, the boosters, Coalition of the Arts, many different organizations to provide supports that we need and should have within our school system, but don't have because of funding. And that includes adequate staff to maintain the fields and the grounds, which is another reason why, again, the fields and the grounds and including the playgrounds are not necessarily maintained or be, are able to be maintained as well as they could be for a proper usage. So that this, again, all goes back to our budget. And, you know, in terms of getting support from these outside organizations, they're wonderful, and they've been very supportive and provide a lot of opportunities for us to be able to have. But it's, again, we need to be able to in-house have the, the monies available to support and maintain our own fields, playgrounds, and facilities. That, again, goes back to the budget.
Right. Okay, the fourth question, the order will be Mr. Shore, Mr., Ms. Steinberg, Ms. Betzal, Betzalo, Ms. Morelli, Ms. Patel, Mr. Schaefer. The question regards the high school. How should the high school better help support the mental health of our students?
Thank you. Put me on the third rail, huh? It's, it's, it starts with support. It starts with education. It starts with programs. Listen, it's a different day and age. We're growing up, the kids, our kids are growing up with them when we grew up. Everything is instantaneous. There's a ton of social media. There's absolutely no hiding from anything or anyone nowadays. I, I think that, first of all, it starts at home. Education and compassion at home will, will bleed into our children in the proper way. Needs to be supported at school. We need programs. We need guidance counselors that are specially trained in this type of, these types of services, and I think that that's where we need to start. I think that it's got to be at least a minimum of a two-pronged, a two-pronged approach where it's done both at school and at home. I don't think you can just try and solve the issue by implementing or enforcing policies or programs at school. I think you need to educate. It takes, you know, three generations for something to finally flow through and be, be abolished. And I think that we need to make sure that our children and their parents are getting the resources that our children need in order to prepare them for their mental health going forward. That's my answer.
Hi, I think that that's actually a fair, those are fair points. What I would say about the high school is there's been, not just at the high school, but throughout this district and throughout this country, especially pre-COVID, an unbelievable increase of mental health needs for students everywhere. We are not alone as a district in that. What we can do as a district is, as I mentioned earlier, is to take a look at our caseload for our guidance counselors and for our child study services case teams, because they, those ratios have gone up exponentially. And what's also gone up exponentially over the last five years is the number of cases that are relating to mental health. And so subsequently, we have a lot of impacted groups here. We've got students, we've got parents, we've got staff, we have teachers. We have a lot of our total community is impacted on it, and we're all doing our best, obviously, at home to support our kids and to support our community. But I think we need to take a more quantitative look at our numbers here to see what's going on and whether or not we have enough support, because those folks were fairly at the same ratios before. When I say those folks, I mean the different counselors and case managers pre-COVID. And now their volumes have gone up. They're still trying to do their regular jobs for a population. to do their regular jobs for a population that was five years ago on top of an exponential increase of mental health needs. The other thing I'd like to say as this relates to mental health is everything is toned from the top. So we need our leader, our leaders here to also support mental health, to be consistent in their messaging, not just about mental health, but about topics that may affect anxiety or mental health. We need that leadership to be consistent, clear, supportive, and upfront, so that that filters down to all of those affected parties. And we all feel benefit of that shared vision and compassion for each other.
Hi. Okay, so I know many are, I think all of my fellow candidates have older kids, either in high school or who have gone through high school, and I obviously don't yet. So I've taken the time over the last couple of months to speak to high school students and to speak to parents of high school students too, so I can listen and learn from them. And what I found is that first and foremost, the students want to feel heard. They want to feel validated. They want to be able to go to the administration and the teachers and express something that happened where they felt that they were harassed or bullied or that they're scared and get feedback and be listened to and not have whatever is bothering them swept under a rug, that it becomes addressed. And I really think that, you know, the first thing you can say to someone is to validate what they're feeling and not being able to that, not having that validation negatively impact their mental health across the board. They need to know that the district cares, that the teacher cares. And I agree with, with Ms. Steinberg where it needs to come from the top. It needs to be clear and the, the administration and the board needs to be supportive of the students. I also agree that we need to take a look at the guidance counselors' caseloads. I know in, last year, we were able to improve the guidance staff. All the elementary schools now have a guidance counselor, which is fantastic. But my kids' guidance counselor changed. So after four years, my son got a new guidance counselor, and all of a sudden he had someone new that he didn't know. And I have no idea if he trusts that person because it wasn't the same person he had in the past. But I think we need to look at those case studies and see if that's an area where we need to expand as well, to make sure that the students are supported.
So, mental health is concerning. So, you know, post-COVID, but it was on the rise. And one of the things that I have been so proud of this district in, in kind of being an innovator is the fact that we have made mental health a priority. We have the Effective School Solutions, the ESR, at both the high school and at the middle school level. That is for students who suffer from varying different mental illnesses, including anxiety and school avoidance. These are trained clinical staff who are available at all times. There are usually two full-time employees there. And we have increased the SACS at the high school since my, since I started in the high school as, as, you know, my daughter is a senior now. As a freshman, we have, I think initially had none, now we have three. We are hiring a supervisor of special services, and I'm hopeful, like Mrs. Steinberg said, that that, the child study team and the guidance counselors to have some time to work on counseling as opposed to all the different hats that you have to wear in a district. In addition, what I love is that HIB information and how to file a HIB is readily accessible for parents and students. The website, it is talked about in school. They are encouraged to use the Gaggle platform to report any concern for themselves or others. And I think that we are headed in the right direction here. And if we work together as a community, I think we will continue to see that these kids and staff feel supported. Thank you.
Mental health, it's my turn, right? Mental health is...
I think it's, I think it's actually my turn.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I apologize.
No problem.
Losing track of the orders. Sorry.
No problem. I agree that it begins with the mental health and support for mental health and the importance of mental health begins at the top down, which is why it is goal two of our strategic plan. And that is something that I supported and voted for, and that was to promote school culture and wellness from, in all aspects. So, starting with the high school, Ms. Morelli mentioned a few of these things. But as part of last year's budget, we included to add counselors at the elementary school level, so that all of our elementary schools would have a full-time counselor and not shared counseling services. We added additional SACS at the high school level. And then additionally, we added technology such as this Gaggle software, just to help the guidance department identify anything that may come up that would, would be presented as a possible concern or a student that's struggling. So there are many things that were put in place and that continue to be put in place because it is a, a goal as part of the strategic plan, is one of the top priorities, and something that I've supported and voted for, for last, during last year's budget for the strategic plan and will continue to support going forward. Thank you.
Again, I apologize for the interruption. Mental health is actually something very close to my heart. I've had personal experience at the familial level with suicide. So I'm well aware of, of what happens to mental health, where it leads to, if not nipped in the bud. I actually approve of the strategic plan, adding the counselors. You know, the board has done some very good things, and I want people to be aware of that. I can tell you personally, I got through it at age 16 because I had a very caring guidance counselor. To this day, actually, I sent him copies of my books. We stay in touch. And I was in college, or I was in high school in 1985. So I believe that, that one-on-one counseling is very important. If we are going to allocate resources somewhere, that might be a good area to consider, maybe even bringing in outside sort of, you know, I guess the, the equivalent of teaching assistance for counselors, again, showing that I'm not a part of the system per se. I'm not sure exactly if that is doable. But one thing I think we also have to address with kids, and I think that's through seminars and through maybe even assemblies, is I, I'm in the commodities trading, and we're always looking at AI. AI is so much more powerful, I think, than people realize. And we saw, we got a little taste of it in our school when some, somebody, you know, used AI to basically manufacture some sordid, some sort of imagery of one of our students. You know, imagine how devastating that is for, for a kid, especially in a develop, especially in adolescence. So I think, you know, more engagement for counselors if needed, even assistant counselors, even maybe bring in mental health professionals every once in a while, just to, to give a, to, you know, to give a, an assembly, a presentation of some sort. But also, like I said, just, you know, Mark was right too. It starts at the home. And it starts, and you guys are also right, it starts at the top, you know, when we have a, when we have a certain ethnicity in our, in our student body that's represented by a significant number of people in our town, and they can't even, you know, put out a strong wordage about the most serious attack on this ethnic group since, since the Schutztoffel. I think, I think that shows a bit of spinelessness, to be honest with you, and I think that has to change. And I think kids need strength. My father was a Marine. Kids need strong people to look up to. And I think adrenalin commentary on very distressing issues doesn't help. But in general, counseling, AI awareness, and, and also zero tolerance for bullies, I think is, is, you know, one strike and you're out. But again, you know, that is, it's a complicated issue. It comes at you from many sides. You know, it would help to not lock kids up for a year or two. But that's, as they say, spilt milk under the bridge. So we have to deal with the moral, the moral weight that we have for inflicting this on these kids. We've got, we threw them in that ditch, we've got to pull them out. And that's one area where I don't mind. Oh, I don't know. We spent $50,000 on an ESSR funds on a community DEI survey two years ago that I don't even know if we saw because it violated FERPA. So we get grants a lot. We just don't spend them properly, in my opinion, based on what I've seen. And I have looked at the budget, by the way. But, you know, the budget is broad strokes that we're able to see. So, you know, when you have out-of-district tuition is 8.299 million, okay, that's great. But I don't know where, divide that up for me. I can't do that. So it's, you know, it's not enough just to look at a budget and say, okay, I should be prepared. So budgets are a little bit deeper than what we see on the, on the website, as anybody who's in LBOs will tell you. Done. Thank you. I'm done.
You're muted. She's muted. You're muted.
All right.
Apologize. Okay. For the fifth quest, question, the order will be Ms. Steinberg, Ms. Betzal, Ms. Morelli, Ms. Patel, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Shore. The question has to do with the DEI curriculum. Please state your opinion about implementing diversity, equity, and inclusion in the schools and what that curriculum would or should include.
Well, I think that when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion, which is a fine concept in theory, what we've seen nationwide is it's used often to exclude other groups. And that has created enormous tensions and enormous challenges in all levels of education. So I think that if we are to be moving forward with DEI, and I would give a very clear example, over six years, I advocated for changes in Holocaust education and for improvements as it relates to fighting antisemitism in the schools. I've gone through multiple superintendents, administrators, teachers, staff, parents, talking to them. And I was really excited to work with this board and get things done with the superintendent and have them pass changes in 2022. One thing that was offered to me when I had those conversations was to include antisemitism as part of the DEI audit. I haven't seen the DEI audit since it was done, and I'd like to see the DEI audit. But I think it's really important that that was even offered to me. And I think that that's the most important issue, is that if we are going to move forward with DEI, we need to do it in a way that really is inclusive, not in a way that is going to keep people from being able to come together. It seems to me that a lot of times there are far-left and far-right tensions that are preventing us from being able to do that. So my focus is on inclusion, but meaningful, real inclusion, not one that is driven by far, anything but a centered approach to what we're trying to accomplish and what we're trying to do to educate our children.
Okay. I firmly believe in creating an inclusive environment in our schools and teaching our children to respect and embrace diversity. It is extremely important. No one should ever be made to feel less than because of their identity, whether it's race, gender, religion, socioeconomic status, or ability. Our differences can make us stronger. And the Westfield schools need to be a place where all the children feel supported and welcomed and accepted, accepted by their peers, by their teachers, by their administrators, by the community. There is tremendous value in learning about the other cultures and understanding how we are the same and different. But I am extremely concerned about the way some of the SHAF DEI curriculum has traditionally been constructed. It has been known for, rather than teaching inclusivity and acceptance, it seems to adopt an extremely reductive oppressor-oppressed worldview that has been shown to actually increase divisiveness. And that is certainly not what we want in our schools. Any DEI training or curriculum we adopt in Westfield needs to be carefully vetted and reviewed to ensure that we are not simply training hostility towards one group for hostility towards another. If elected, I would hope to work with the DEI specialist, not hope, I would work with the DEI specialist the district just hired, to make sure that there's a framework in place to assess the impact of our efforts, not be afraid to change course and pivot if those efforts aren't delivering positive measurable results for our community. If we move forward, we really, we need to do this in partnership with the community in a way that is truly inclusive. You know, it's not a contest, and everyone should be able to feel like they belong.
Thank you. So DEI is not a choice. It's state mandated. So we have to show the state that we are providing DEI in our schools. And I agree with what Lindsay said, which is that, in theory, it's wonderful. Unfortunately, in practice, there has been problems. It's been problematic. For DEI to work, yes, the curriculum does need to be vetted. In our strategic plan, we talk about professional development and community engagement in part of our objectives, investigating and addressing disparity between students, examining existing programs of studies and determining how to consistently provide access and eligibility. And a lot of this doesn't have to do with race, or gender, or sexuality, or religion. A lot of this just has to do with an even playing field for all humans. And I do think that DEI, if it is developmentally appropriate and done responsibly, is a wonderful thing. We should have the lessons in school about tolerance and acceptance and inclusion. And we should have true tolerance and acceptance and inclusion. And one of those things that we, that we have always been preaching in Westfield is that, you know, we are this, we have these traditions of excellence. Well, how can you be an excellent student and not an excellent person? So that, that is the goal of DEI. That is how I see it. And I'm in support of it. And it's not a choice anyway. It's mandated.
As Leila mentioned, DEI is mandated and also is included in our strategic plan as goal three, which is to increase diversity, equity, and inclusion across academics and extracurriculars. So we've touched upon a few areas of how important we think we, I can say that I think DEI is and that I fully support it, and that it does start at home and needs to continue through education through, in the, in the school environment. And that can include in areas of curriculum to make sure that we can provide access to advanced coursework and programs to all students, and to create and expand inclusive opportunities for students to participate in athletics, visual and performing arts, so academics, extracurriculars in all areas. So there's a lot of work in this area. It is state mandated and something that is very important and very clear to, to the existing board. That's something we need to continue to support, emphasize, and make, and we made a commitment to it through our strategic plan. And I fully support it and hope to see it continue to grow in our school system.
My next. I don't want to interrupt anyone.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Schaefer.
Good. DEI, you know, look, I, I believe that while it was well-intentioned at its genesis, DEI initiatives actually do the opposite of their ostensible purpose, which I assume is to break down ethnic, racial, religious, and cultural barriers between students. I mean, who wouldn't want that? But in reality, DEI has shown itself to be nothing more than a veiled condemnation of one group of people and culture as the wellspring of oppression, with all the others being the oppressed category, and divides them along a moral line between, you know, moral, the moral high ground and, you know, the moral low ground. And all of it has to do mainly with power, nothing else. No, not conduct, not anything else. So I think DEI, whatever it was intended to do, has been hijacked by a, by a rather, quite frankly, rather racist overtone to it. And I, I'm not a fan of it at all, despite its nice intentions. And from there, it just becomes an excuse to discriminate, ironically, under the guise of, of fighting discrimination. Now, I do, I am aware that it is state mandated, but that's a pretty broad term. I'm not sure exactly what that means. State mandated, meaning you have to have three DEI officers, you have to have one. I mean, what, what do you have to do here? Because personally, I would go for the minimum. Of course, you want diversity, equity, and inclusion. But the problem is that these don't do the very, they do not create the environment that the people are trying to create. So why, so what is the point? Just, you know, we live in the world of reality, not philosophy. And the reality is, it does more harm than good to the very people that we're trying to help, in my personal view.
Thank you, Mr. Shore.
Yeah, thank you. DEI, we often talk about DEI as one over-encompassing theory, but actually, in effect, it's three. Everyone should remember, it's diversity, equity, and inclusion. You can't, you can't have the program without all three. That being said, as a state mandate, as a board member, I would work with the DEI people to make sure that we do meet the state standards. However, I would be also very cognizant to ensure that we're not throwing out good coursework just so that we can fill a certain level of standard without, without ensuring that we're going to be able to appropriately teach and prepare our students and our children for the future. There are numerous studies that will show you that DEI, when incorporated into a business on a board, are way more profitable than companies that are not diverse, have equity, and inclusion, and are inclusive. So for that, I am in favor of it, but I'm not in favor of it in So for that, I am in favor of it, but I'm not in favor of it in the fact that it's got to be the overriding and sole purpose of our course curriculum. We need to maintain a stringent supportive curriculum that's going to prepare all of our children for their next chapters in their lives. Then I'd also make sure that those who are going to be tasked with teaching it are there to teach it, not express their views. I can't tell you how many times my children have come home from school over the last four years, certainly since COVID and certainly since it was more available through video, that I can tell you in almost each and every case, what their political slant is of a teacher of mine. And I think that's got to be gone. I do not think you should be able to know what your, what the political slant of a teacher is. They're there to, they're there to teach and prepare our children for the future, not impose their politics on them.
Thank you. Okay, we are back to the, I'm not muted, right? We're back to the beginning for the sixth question. Ms. Betzal, Ms. Morelli, Ms. Patel, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Shore, Ms. Steinberg. And the question has to do with aftercare, before and aftercare. What will you do to address the shortage of onsite before and aftercare in the elementary and middle schools?
Okay, well, I want to start by saying I feel the pain of whoever asked this question. Pre-COVID, my husband and I commuting into the city five days a week. We had to have a full time nanny from seven to seven because there were no before care options and no aftercare options that were accessible to everybody. So I get it and I understand and I'm passionate about changing it. The unfortunate thing that I have discovered is that it is a space and budget issue for the district. Kind of a through line here for the rest of the conversation too, taking us back to the beginning. But I, we need staff, you know, you have to hire staff to run the beforecare and the aftercare. So that goes into a priority that I had mentioned about retaining staff and wanting to keep them in the district and to work more hours. We need the space, we need to be able to use it. I know that the YMCA has some beforecare options. My kids at Franklin, it wasn't an option to have it at Franklin, you have to be at the YMCA. I don't know why, but I would ask the questions and figure out a path forward because I know that it is, it is a priority. COVID may have changed the way that many of us work, but it hasn't changed the need for childcare. And I totally understand that. And it is something that I will work towards fixing by looking at the budget and figuring out a way to have our facilities be used to care for the kids while the parents still need to work. Schools end at three, the workday does not, so.
Thank you, Ms. Morelli.
Sorry, um, so this is the first time I've heard this question in my, you know, over 18 years of living here. And again, this was something that was astounding to me when I moved here as someone coming from the city, that there was no beforecare, there weren't, there was no aftercare, and again, no full day kindergarten. And we did pay for the YMCA for aftercare. And what was interesting is we paid double what Scotch Plains paid for the YMCA for aftercare. I couldn't believe because Westfield charges more and how is that fair? It all comes down to, again, money. Is this, is this something that the school district is going to prioritize? To be budgeted for or included in a line item on a referendum? A space for it or additional staffing or, no, is this going to be incorporated into the operational budget? It's definitely something that is important for, for families. So it is something that should be explored. And it is something that should be accessible to everyone, just like how we spoke about how different students have different experiences in different elementary schools and middle schools. Everyone needs to have the same experience. There is no north side, south side, Westfield, we're all Westfield. So it is something we need to look at.
Well, I'm, I'm very far removed from this issue and I have not heard much about it. It has, or has it come up in my tenure on the board? Even in the thought exchange that recently went out where we were looking for feedback from the community about what, what pop up or bubbled up as the most priority items. But I do understand that it has come up at PTC and that we've opened up space in schools. So I'm not sure if we have a waitlist or we don't have a waitlist or if it's not maybe providing the adequate kind of support that you're looking for or the timeframe that I, that, that came up, of why that question came up. But it would have to be, again, the constraint being the budget, being the facilities, the availability of class space and teachers to monitor and supervise. So this is something that could, could be addressed, but I honestly have not heard much about it in my time on the board.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yeah, I remember when my wife and I moved to Westfield back in 1996, I think it was, or 97, it's so long ago. This was an issue, this was sort of a discussion. I don't know how formalized it was in a panel like this, but this was a discussion we've had for a while. And the problem is, as all these panelists have mentioned, and I'm just going to be an echo chamber here, is it's budgetary constraints, like so much on this laundry list of things that we all want to do. You know, if you had Elon Musk with his checkbook out, we could do everything we want, but we don't. So we have to decide once again how to, what to prioritize. I personally think that morning and afternoon care is, is pretty important, especially now when you have so many dual household incomes. So I, you know, as someone else up here said, I feel your pain. My wife worked in the city, I worked in Jersey City and we had to have daycare in the morning and then daycare, you know, and then one of us would race home early to get the kids. So I do understand where you're coming from. I'm not going to lie to you, I don't have the answer to that yet. I would think that it all has to do with dollars and cents like everything else. And what I, the theme I'm getting from this, and this has been helpful for me, is that really it's a matter of priorities. And so I think one of the first things a board should do is we all kind of get on the same page and decide what our priorities are. And as I believe I said earlier, Franklin said, politics is the art of the possible. So we need to sit down, you know, from different perspectives and go, okay, what is best for our kids going forward? We do agree on this, we do agree on this, so let's prioritize that. We don't agree on DEI so much, but we do agree on mental health, but you know, and maybe create it from organically like that. Now, that might sound naive to the board members who've had to deal with $133 million budget, whatever it is. So again, I'm just, you know, that's the way I approach things, whether or not that technique works in a board as opposed to a business. Have to wait and see on that one, but I give it a shot, that's for sure.
So one of the, I think, I think, you know, as we're all probably of, you know, close to similar age here. And I think that when I was growing up, there was no such thing as aftercare or even before school care. But we did have busing. And I think a good portion of this issue was related to the fact that our children cannot walk home from their elementary school. They can't, I can't ask my son to walk or my daughter to walk over a mile down East Broad Street to get back to my house, past the cemetery and what other, what other unforeseen obstacles? So is busing an option here? Is busing an opportunity to maybe alleviate the need for active care? The answer is I'm not sure, but it's certainly something we would look at. And if that's not the option, then it's going to have to most likely be privatized like it is now. Where are we going to find the space? We're going to need to get the architects on board and we're going to need to find the space on the existing elementary schools or that are very, very close by, where they can be walked to with a, with a chaperone or a teacher. That's going to require money and it's going to require privatization. Y does a great job, my kids were part of the Y aftercare program for many years at Washington School. They not only made great friends, but they had a great time and it was enormously safe learning environment for them. So we've got to look at all the options and that goes privatization, it's busing, it's a number of options that we need to sit down and as a community, think about what the best solution is for that. Thank you.
So let's talk about the art of the possible. When my children were young and before we moved to Westfield, our elementary school did not have an aftercare program. And I worked for over a year with the board, with the school and with the parents to develop a cost sharing model. I have seen it done, I can tell you it can be done. It requires a lot of skillful negotiating and patience and communicating with parties that all have different issues, but it can be done. So I would say, secondly, that when my kids were in elementary school, I had the pleasure of being both a full time working mom, commuting into the city and sometimes having to travel and then also being a stay at home mom for several years when they really needed me. And I needed them. So I am very familiar with both sides of aftercare and what we do and do not offer. What I would say is several things. First of all, our timing of our schools is something other districts all over the country have looked at. And I know the block schedule is on the, the table for the high school and I'm thrilled to hear about that. But let's talk about when start times are. Why do elementary schools start the latest in the day? When it is those, and kindergarten for that matter, when it is those working parents who need to get out early and their kids who are up earliest. Further, as the kids get older, middle school and high school, those kids are tired. Anyone who's ever had a middle school or a high schooler knows that sometimes it's really difficult to drag them out of bed. So what if we could work with all of the different contracts that are there? I realize that this is a big endeavor to undo, I'm not trying to minimize that. But what if we worked towards something creative like that? Another option I want to mention is the idea of potentially, especially for beforecare at the elementary schools is incorporating physical education. We don't have enough time in the day or resources, but what if we brought physical education? That's another thing that districts around the country have been doing is opening the day a little bit earlier and having that time focused on physical education. Some schools open it up and have it as a study hall. It really depends on all the different needs or combination thereof, we could do that. And finally, transportation, which, and space, those are real issues, real issues that we need to talk about. When it comes to transportation, it's the, we're lucky in Westfield not to have a required transportation because we're two miles by two miles, but yes, it hurts. My kids walk from Jefferson over to Edison, over to the high school, and when it's raining, it's not pretty. On the other hand, if you look at our comparable districts that have transportation, it is their number one cost. It's the number one cost. And it's also become very difficult, even if you have privately secured transportation, to get it reliable, unless you actually have it in-house. So I would also finally say that perhaps we can look to the town and see whether or not town resources in terms of space could be made available. We do have wonderful facilities in town. We do have a lot of new facilities being developed. Perhaps that's also something that could be leveraged. And my point is, is that as a Board of Education member, I would look at those sorts of creative solutions. And I would listen to parents as well to see what can and can't work. And I would listen to the Board of Education members who have been there, who have probably tried to do some of those things and maybe it worked, maybe it didn't. But I would take a look at it creatively, listen and try to get as much implemented as I have successfully in the past, both here and in other districts. Thank you.
Sorry, I was on mute. Okay, for our last question, the order will be Ms. Morelli, Ms. Patel, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Shore, Ms. Steinberg and Ms. Betzal. And the question regards special education support. Can you suggest ways for Westfield schools to provide in-class inclusion for students with IEPs?
I certainly can. This is what I do in my professional life. I feel very passionately that true inclusion should exist at every school across the board, at every grade level. I have a classified child, there was one teacher coming in for writing. He was going to another room for, for math. And what is the best practice? And Dr. Weissman, and I have discussed this at length, is having two teachers, a gen ed teacher and a special ed teacher co-teach throughout elementary school. That is best practice. What is the problem? What is the holdup? Facilities and finances. So in the interim, if you can't have what you know is ideal, you, you put Band-Aids on things. And the problem with putting Band-Aids on things is that they don't hold everything. And then you have children who are sent out of district because we don't have what is needed to meet their needs in district, like an Orton Gillingham program or like true inclusion. Or they have to go to a different school to get the program that they need. So we have had these discussions, Dr. Weissman and Dr. Gonzalez and Dr. Bolton are, and are all on the same page. We know where we want to get and we have goals. And we are consistently meeting them by expanding our programming offerings, by hiring qualified expertise teachers. And that is, in my opinion, the first step. And creating the opportunity to get feedback from parents of children who are classified, how we can best support their students so that they're included, not only in school with increasing all of our programs, but also after school, like in those drama programs, in those visual and performing arts programs, in sports. These are, we, Westfield has an excellent athletic program, an excellent theater program. So maybe not everybody is going to get on the team or into the show, but what else can we offer them so that they are included in every part of the Westfield experience?
Ms. Patel.
Thank you. So special ed is a priority for our administration. And as a board member and as the current president, I have supported and fully support. And you'll see it in our current budget vote for this year, that there are a number of things that we are doing to provide, to build and provide support for students. And I think Ms. Morelli touched upon a few of them, and that would be bringing in two programs in-house so that our current students that are in these programs at the elementary level would not have to go out of district and they could stay within their home community to be able to stay in district to attend school. With that, we would be hiring, hoping to hire with a, the passage of the budget would be to hire special ed teachers and a special ed supervisor as well to support the programs. We also see a need to support our paraprofessionals who support those students to retain because we're, we see that we're losing a lot of staff, not just teacher staff, but paraprofessionals as well. So that's something that's in our existing budget as well. So we do see that as a priority. I support it, I think Ms. Morelli, I can say supports it as well, so does our, our current board. And that is something that we hope to, that, that, the program and offerings in the special ed department of classes, academics is something we would like to see grow in the coming years.
Some of these comments are very encouraging, actually. I know the out of district placement is an interesting area I found when I was going over the budget. It's about nine, Thomas, if I get it right, it's about around $9 million or so, we spend a year a little bit under that. But the reason is Westfield has a reputation for being a good school district. And if you have a child with special needs and you need to get out of, you know, and need out of district placement, so out of district placement is high, is high. But meanwhile, there are a lot of parents who I understand who have IEPs that don't qualify for out of district. They have to fight extensively with the district to get it. I believe there are like kids with ADHD, autism, severe behavioral cognitive issues, they all have, they can all get IEPs. But for those who don't, I know they have 504 plans, but I'm not sure how legally solid those are. So question is, somebody said very, very smart, they were like, you know, again, it sounds like a broken record and I apologize if I, if I bring a whatever spreadsheet mentality to a lot of things. But it's a matter of resources, a matter of priorities, and a matter of money and, you know, physical resources as well. I think that bringing in specialized counselor, I would be interested in taking the out of district placement and seeing how many of those kids we can keep inside, inside the district. If so, then I'd be interested to see what kind of a cost savings that would allow to then see how much we have to work with to give them more personalized in district help they need. As, you know, I find it interesting though, that we're talking about including kids in other areas where at the same time, we've been cutting the arts. You know, there, there are very few places for mentally challenged kids to excel as much as they can in the arts. I mean, it's, you know, I can, I've seen it personally, teaching piano, teaching guitar to special needs kids who, you know, they're, they're quiet and then they light up when they play. So I guess, you know, I mean, again, it's one of the Band-Aids that I would put, put out there, maybe have special, you know, performing arts classes for, for kids who may not qualify to be on stage or may not be able to shred or something like that. But just something to give them a sense of, of value and a sense that they are, that they belong to the community and they should be loved. Really, it comes down to dollars and cents like everything else. And the first we have to do is forget what our priorities are. And I'm getting a decent idea from this forum, what the parents' priorities are and what the boards are. And I don't think there's a lot of, I don't think they're as far apart as I, as I thought they might have been. So that's encouraging.
Thank you. So first of all, I, I actually am not in favor of the, of the term special needs. I really prefer additional needs because these children need additional needs. They may or may not, they're, they're all special children and these children need additional needs that maybe a non-additional needs children might like. The first thing I would, I would non-additional needs children might like. Uh, the first thing I would, I would strive for is continuity and consistency with their teaching and their care, the paras specifically, they need to be supported. Uh, they need to be trained as well as we can possibly train them so that we're not recycling through paras every couple of years. And these children are getting new faces uh, at the beginning of a school year because we had the inability to maintain a paraprofessional in our school district for budgetary constraints. You know, to answer Brad's question about the out of district, there's approximately 100 students out of district right now at a cost of approximately 8.5 million dollars. The current administration is looking at bringing back a small number, I think about 10 of them into the district if possible. So while that is, while I don't want to say a low-hanging fruit, it is an opportunity for us to recapture some of that budgetary funds to be able to spend on these priorities to make sure that the additional needs children's do get the services, the continuity and the consistency that they not only require, but deserve. Thank you.
As a special needs parent and, oh, is it my turn? I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, great. As a special needs parent and disability advocate for more than 15 years now, um, I'm glad to hear that this question is on the table, especially as it relates to kids who have I E Ps, although there are plenty of kids who have five oh fours too, whose disabilities also should be taken into account. There are so many more concerns about special education than there were even 10 years ago. And when I look at, when we moved to Westfield, part of the reason we moved here is because the special education program was so good. And I knew that it would let my kid be as capable as he could be if there were more supports, more service and more good work. I was very impressed, even though I don't rely on the Wilson programs. I was very impressed with what they had to offer and the fact that Dr. Weissman helped build that up. And I'm glad that in this budget, we have the next round because those kids previously would have been out of district in elementary school too. Now those kids in middle school, if this budget passes, will have a place to go. And I do think it's important that we're doing that if the parents are in fact pleased with this proposal. I would also say that we are blessed to have the E S S program, which has benefited so many students, but we only have it at the high school and at Roosevelt. We don't have it at Edison and we don't have it at the elementary schools. The E S S program actually brings qualified psychologists on staff well, private, privately, private, uh, privately hired folks into the schools. Sometimes it's in these kids' schedules every day, every week, et cetera. They're interacting with the teachers. And so that also goes to the mental health issues we were talking, which has also been tremendous in terms of its impact on special education. I would say that if you look at my platform, one thing that I've really focused on and Leila also echoed it is the use of I C S dual teaching, um, not just in the preschool, not just in the, uh, middle school and high school, but let's bring it to the elementary school level. There's no reason for us not to be doing I C S. Yes, are there budgetary considerations and operational logistics, all the things we've all talked about? Yes, there are. Is it something we should be addressing? Sure. Because it's having an impact. And the impact isn't just on the kids. It's also on the staff that's been discussed here, whether it's teachers or paras. Uh, earlier Lindsay referenced the idea that her counselor was changing for her kid. Well, in the I E P world, every year, sometimes it feels like some of the roles that these kids are supposed to have, the services or as case managers, it feels like a defense of the dark arts position. And sometimes that can change two or three times a year.
Time is up. Thank you.
Okay, my turn. I think, right? Yes. Um, all in all, I think our special education program definitely needs to be expanded. Um, I agree with those that said that ideally we would have one special ed and one general, gen ed teacher in our classes at all age levels. Um, I don't know that that is exactly feasible. And I do know that our schools don't offer even close to that. And as a result, many families go out of district at all ages, which is a huge line item in our budget. Um, you know, one thing we can do is invest in the educators, um, and the paraprofessionals and the special educators. We can invest in teacher training and expansion of programs offered so we can keep more in the district. Um, we can have professional development for some of the gen ed teachers so they are a little bit more in the know. Um, and we can start there. I know it's not a solution to the problem. It's probably just another Band-Aid, but at least it's a start. Um, I also think, you know, one thing for sure is that we need to expand the programming to be at the very least, to have the same programs on both sides of town. Because right now I know that certain programs are offered on the south side, certain programs are offered on the north side at the elementary and the middle school level. And I think that many don't realize the long-term effects of not having the same programs available at all the schools for the children socially and emotionally when they have to go to where they are, um, assigned to by district. I would want to talk to the community and the parents, um, to find the least restrict, least restrictive environment for their own kid and then work with them to figure out how to prioritize it. Look at the needs of the district, the special needs of the district as a whole. And then, yes, we are hiring more teachers in the budget. Yes, we are going to be able to increase the paraprofessionals' salaries with the budget approval, and that's great. But I think we need to kind of do a little bit more research, figure out where we need to be so that we can keep more kids in the district and give them the least restrictive environment so that they can thrive as well. In addition to that, very quickly, I agree with Ms. Morelli about the after-school and extracurricular activities too. More programs like buddy ball and being able to include special needs in theater and in sports and in everything else after school is equally as important. Thank you.
Okay, we are ready for our closing. We will do reverse alphabet. Ms. Steinberg, Mr. Shore, Mr. Schaefer, Ms. Patel, Ms. Morelli and Ms. Betzalal.
Thank you. I thought that this was a very productive forum and I want to thank everybody who organized this tonight for us and thank my fellow candidates, uh, for their thoughtful feedback and comments. I learned a lot listening to you. I would just say that I think I have a proven level of advocacy and efficacy in terms of being able to get things done. I think I also have a proven level of being able to listen to people in the community and to help them with their needs. And if I am elected to the Board of Education, I will continue that. And I will do everything in my power to listen, to hear and to make effective change for all of us in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first of all, thank everybody for spending the last couple of hours on this call with us or on this video conference with us. Much appreciate all the attention that everyone is putting into this upcoming April 16th election. Uh, if elected to the board, my priorities will be to, one, focus on the budget to make sure that we have the resources to do all of the things that we need to do. For far too long, Westfield has actually boasted about the fact that we spend one of the least amounts per student in the state of New Jersey. That is not necessarily the recipe for a winning formula. Two, I will prioritize making blue ribbon schools. Uh, I will work with the administration. I will work with the individual administrators to increase the blue, number of blue ribbon schools and the persistency in which we achieve that status. Uh, if you want to be known as a good school district, you're going to need blue ribbon schools. Um, thirdly, I'm going to work with our administrators and our board to make sure that we improve our standing in the state rankings of school districts. We want, we all want our children to succeed and be competitive out there. Uh, so thank you. I've got, um, I guess I'm being flash that I have no more time left. Thank you very much.
Well, I want to thank all the, uh, all the other members of this forum for being here. Uh, I've especially learned a lot as probably, uh, the one who has been farthest removed, I guess, from the intricacies of how the sausage is made with the board. But I do have certain priorities that I would, uh, that I would bring. Uh, number one is again, uh, you have to watch the budget. I mean, all these are great ideas. We, we've listed a laundry list of things tonight. But the fact of the matter is, you know, if you've got a 10-pound bag, you can't put a 15-pound sandwich in it. You've got to, got to figure out what five pounds don't matter the most. Um, I've identified over $150,000 and what I think is useless spending over the last two years alone. And I wasn't contradicted when I said it, so I'm assuming what I said was true. I would prioritize STEM because the fact of the matter is, you know, our competitors don't really care about, you know, how, you know, don't really care about diversity, equity, inclusion. They're, you know, do you want your kids to, to be prepared for the world that is going to be highly technological? That's going to be highly globalized where they're going to be competing not with kids from just Cranford or Scotch Plains, but kids from Shanghai, kids from Bombay, kids from all over the world. You know, so to me, I, my goal is to send out a group of, pardon my language, but some kick-ass students who actually know what the, you actually know how to make it in this world. Um, I also believe that mental health is seriously a part of that because we inflicted mental health on these kids for two years, for over a year.
To Billy's Brad?
Looks like he, uh,
No, he was cut off.
I think his internet died.
Okay, well, let's continue then. I know there is.
What happened?
You lost internet, it seemed.
So I think you froze up for a minute.
Oh, I did?
Yeah. Just for a second, just for a second.
You have another 15 seconds. Thank you.
Oh, well, that's the case. Clearly I bring a, uh, a more iconoclastic view of, to things and maybe that's what we need. You know, doing things, maybe you need somebody who can look at things from a fresh perspective and hasn't been told that that's not possible yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patel.
Thank you, everyone, for this forum and to the other candidates. Um, I understand many of the challenges that have come up tonight and I have the experience and leadership skills to address them. As for, as a board member and the current board president, I've successfully navigated many of the unprecedented challenges from hybrid learning to fields, to the superintendent search, uh, to staff cuts due to budget constraints and to moving the budget vote to April. I believe in strong partnerships between parents, teachers and administrators. Our schools are the heart of our community and I've worked for the past three years and will continue to work to ensure that they are welcoming and inclusive for everyone. Our children deserve a world-class education that prepares them for success in their future. So I hope everyone votes yes for the budget on April 16th to support our schools and our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morelli?
I want to thank everyone who made this evening possible. As a board member, I will continue to get a priority to be educated on all topics and to communicate with and engage the community so that they too have an understanding of education issues as well as how they're impacting how and where their tax dollars are being spent. But let me be clear that the students are the priority. Whether or not we have what a child needs, whether we can, we can, we can create a program, whether we can keep a child in district, that's amazing. But if we cannot provide a free and appropriate education, we are responsible to these students to meet their needs other ways. So that can't always be where we're cutting corners without a district tuition, the students come first. If reelected, my goal is to continually support the students and staff to provide an atmosphere where all feel safe, represented and included, and we're all have equal access and opportunity to thrive. I will advocate for and be the voice, voice of the students to ensure that their needs are met. I am honored to have been a part of the board for the past three years and we were integral in supporting and passing, uh, the 2023 to 2020 strategic plan. And I look forward, I'm building upon the progress that's been made in the last three and a half years and out in April and make sure that you vote as the budget for our students.
Ms. Betzala?
Excuse me. Okay, I wasn't sure. Thank you. Um, so thank you guys, the P T C and the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight and for everyone who watched. I was really inspired by all of the questions and the answers as well. Anyone who knows my husband and me knows how much pride we have in this town. We are building roots to grow for a very long time. Our schools are the cornerstone of our community and they are what we can build our future on and what makes Westfield such a great place to live. And while my fellow candidates have older kids and a retrospective view of where things were, my eyes are on the future. Where we're going is what matters. And I have two horses in the race for quite a while. If elected, I will work to make sure that all students feel supported and welcomed, that our facilities and infrastructure keep up with Westfield's growing and evolving needs, that the curriculum is consistent throughout the schools, that technology programs prioritize innovation and digital safety, and that the district decision-making is transparent and collaborative. I do hope to expand the special needs programs and the enrichment and gifted curriculum, focusing on enhancements, starting in the elementary schools all the way to 12th grade. I have a zero tolerance policy for acts of hate against any marginalized community. We are no place for hate district and that needs to be communicated clearly and consistently. It impacts everything down to our kids' mental health. And on that note, I did mean to say that we can bring in mindfulness and meditation coaches for kids and staff as a way to help the high school students. But finally, I promise to create a strong and healthy partnership between Westfield parents and the board. Together, we can make our schools a better place where all children can flourish. So please go out and vote on April 16th. Look for the last name on the ballot, mine. Thank you again and good luck to all of my fellow candidates.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. And sorry again with the link and the computer and like, have a good night, everybody.
No worries. We just want to thank you on behalf of the P T C for participating. It's really useful. I'm glad to hear that you guys found it useful as well. And we want to thank all of the participants, uh, for listening. It's really important. And, um, this is being recorded and hopefully it should be up on the board website. We're going to give Mary Ann a couple of days to do that because I have to get it over to her. So we'll blame it on me. But thanks, everybody. Sorry for the, uh, the technology snafus. Next year, no WebEx. I say that every, okay. I say that every year, but the, tell the district to pay for Zoom. Put that in the budget.
We're scrambling here too, right before.
Thanks for your help, everyone.
I want to say thank you to my husband and my kid for getting me online today.
I know, WebEx is the worst. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I know, we've every, it's not just you guys. Every year it happens, but, um, everybody got on reasonably in time, so we're all good.
Thanks so much.
Thank you again, everybody.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you. Thanks to all our participants.